Hello, thanks guys.
Hello, everybody.
Thank you. I apologize for technical issues that seems to happen when we will be done. So we will now call this meeting for June 7, 2021, regular meeting according to order. I beg to recognize that we are on pretty land and we are all pretty fine people. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Our yes and all, all in favor? Next, we're going to go to the appointment of the deputy mayor. And there is a memo for any of you that are wondering about how this works with the organizational procedure. So at this time, I would like to appoint councillor Cathy Valentino as my deputy mayor for the rest of this year. Would you accept this?
Yes, yes, I will, please.
Thank you. And as the mayor, I do get to appoint my deputy mayor. Thank you. And then now we're going to appoint the committee chair, which will according to our procedures will be deputy mayor Valentino. Will carry out the duties as deputy chair of legal and finance committee. Thank you Cathy. Now council elects the committee member to the legal and finance. We need one more member. Names can come forward. And we will go by there with the people on Zoom. Maybe city manager, you'll explain how that is if more than one is nominated.
Sure, if there's more than one nomination, they'll go to ballot. As to viewer on Zoom, you will be texting me your vote and I will enter your ballot for you.
Okay. All right.
Can I nominate councillor Peru? To the committee?
You'll accept the nomination?
Yeah, you accept.
Okay. Any further nominations? Councillor Wong?
I'd like to nominate councillor Ellsworth.
Councillor Ellsworth, you'll accept?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Any further nominations? Further nominations for a second time? Third time, any further nominations? Okay, with that, we will go to a vote. Everybody was given a piece of paper. Please put your choice. Brian and Brayden, you will text Anthony. Either councillor Wong or, pardon me, councillor Ellsworth or deputy mayor. No, or councillor Peru. Sorry, it's been a long bit. Councillor Peru and councillor Ellsworth are the two names for the second position.
One for councillor Ellsworth. One for Peru. Two for Peru. For less. One for Peru. Ellsworth. Ellsworth, four for councillor Ellsworth, five for councillor Peru, councillor Peru carry the election.
Congratulations councillor Peru for the finance made 11:30 every Monday morning.
Just a reminder, at the end of the meeting, there will be a motion to destroy the ballots.
Next, just community comments or feedback. Can we get anybody calling in or asking? Sorry?
No, we've had no registrations for questions. I do have answers from questions from the previous council meeting. I believe members of council asked some questions for the CFO with respect to legal fees as well as Tormoth cap invoices. I believe that was sent by our CFO to all members of council with an explanation of all the questions. With respect to the questions from Mr Ron Matichak about the Canadian Tire, There is a total of 20 invoices that were added up together to make that $1,225. Everything from cupwings, a grease gun, a battery, hangers, containers, electrical cords and whatnot, the majority of the costs under that $1,225 are quoted to the vaccine clinic and have been paid for by the province of Manitoba. So we expended the funds for the vaccine clinic for them, and then they paid us back for the work and stuff. So that's the majority of what was on that. And I believe that the city also sent the breakdown to Mr Matichak by email.
Seeing no further comments from community feedback, we'll move on. The adoption of minutes 6.1 is for the public hearing. Zoning by law amendment on May 28, 2021. Resolution 2021, 082, moved by councillor Fountain, second by councillor Peru. Here resolved that minutes of the public hearing by law 2012-2021 zoning by law amendment for accessory building held in council chamber, sitting hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Councillor Fountain, any question?
None, thank you.
Over to the question, all those in favor?
All right.
This adoption of minutes for the regular meeting of council, May 25, 2021. Resolution 2021, 083, moved by councillor Ellsworth, second by councillor Fountain. Here resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Council? Over to the question, all those in favor?
All right.
Correspondent. We have a letter from Tricia Griffin, president of CMHA Thompson Region in regards to the Thompson homeless shelter findings. Pauline Smoot, Mayor of Thompson. Dear Mayor Smoot, on behalf of the Canadian Mental Health Association Thompson Region, I would like to thank the city of Thompson, mayor and council for your continued support of the Thompson homeless shelter. Your budget approval of $20,000 will be put to good use benefiting not only the PHS clients but the city of Thompson as a whole. It is our continued goal to provide a welcoming and safe environment for these extremely vulnerable members of our community. With sincere gratitude, Tricia Griffin, president of the CMHA. Any comments? Hi guys.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to point out, we've received correspondence from the CMHA acknowledging the money that we gave them as a grant for this year. I appreciate that. However, we'd also received correspondence from a client of ours or a business of ours in the downtown area. I see that we, that's not attached here. Just like to urge this council to, we're going to talk about these things publicly, that we do that with all the letters that we received. Thank you.
If you bring my attention, which ones, there are?
CIBC. CIBC.
Thank you. And that's it. Now we're going to go into resolutions. Resolution 10.1 is a resolution rescind number 2021, 070, being a resolution to approve the financial plan. Resolution 2021, 084, moved by councillor Wong, second by councillor Ellsworth. Whereas on May 10, 2021, council passed resolution number 2021, 070, approving the 2021 financial plan. And whereas on May 25, 2021, deputy mayor Wong submitted a written notice of motion to rescind the resolution 2021, 070. Now therefore, here resolve that council rescind resolution 2021, 070. Administration?
This was not brought forward by administrations, brought forward by members of council.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you. There's a few reasons that I think I need to do this. Because I carefully review the comment, the statement that Madam Mayor you made. One of the things that you say, hope this will not divide us. So obviously the results. We are kind of divided. So I've been very carefully think about this after the week. I think I need to do this. One of the reason is, I want to see this financial plan passed by unanimous. And all I'm asking is, Madam Mayor, just to listen to us one time, have a conversation. Because this financial plan to me is overspending, okay? And there's a few things I want to make. Another point that you made. You say that, oh, all we need is 700,000 to keep the door open for the North Black food. So anyway, I have people approved me after they heard this from you. And why the hell would we build a new one? That's the question to ask me. So by approaching by a few people, plus some of my council, so that's why I put this resolution to rescind, to hopefully we can come back to the table and discuss about this financial plan. I want to make a few more points. I can go back to five years. I'm not going to go back more than that. Five years, 2016, we budgeted 30.4 million dollars. At the end, we had 200,000 dollars surplus. 2017, we budgeted 32.4 million dollars. And at the end, we have 200,000 dollars surplus. 2018, we budgeted 31.5 million dollars. And we have 1.15 million dollars surplus. 2019, we budgeted 34.7 million dollars. And we have 1.47 million dollars of surplus. Last year, we budgeted 32.2 million dollars. And we have 1.7 million dollars surplus. So based on what I, my experience of being council second term, we should have budgeted 42 million dollars. I can very sure to say, at the end, we could receive at least 1.8 million dollars surplus. So those are my concern. Because I always use the same terminology. We are taking money out of a taxpayer saving account to put in the city saving account and the budget for profit. I hope we are not doing this time. That's what I'm so eager and passionate about. Even when I make my comment across the line sometime. Which is a little bit regret of using some terms that I use. But I think as a second term of the council, I have obligation to make sure. And also, I hear you, Madam Mayor, very clear. You say you don't want to divide this because of this. So I'm trying to provide another opportunity to see whether we can come to the aisle, across the aisle and make this happen. I'm not asking for everything. We all, I'm just asking for a few items to be moving around. You can still have the 42 million dollars budget as you guys wish for. I hear a lot of council making a very good point. Not everything bad, not everything bad. So some they say, well, the money for future, I'm a little worried about the money that we borrow, the money that we could spend for the future generation. I'm worried about if we spend it wrong. We are not helping the future generation. We are putting burden to the future generation. So that's why I use my term, I say, it's a good money, but handled by the bad decision. A lot of example, I put it out, I'm not going to go back again. Another thing, it's starting to be very, very, very concerned about as a mayor. You said that, cool. I guess the question is, city manager, if I may indulge, do we ask if we get the support if we move on with the budget tonight for the next step? Based on councillor Ellsworth's opinion and couple of others' counsel can, we still proceed with this? Here's my concern, Madam Mayor. You are elected to be a mayor. That's simple decision, you should able to make it. Because you are sitting up there. If you think you want to table it, by all you can say that, but you're asking the city manager, who is not elected to make that decision. So I quickly concerned about that leadership. So with all this, what I just mentioned earlier, I like to hope the council and mayor yourself reconsider the financial plan. Oh, I'm asking again, I'm not saying script the whole entire thing. I know we put a lot of hard work into this, and this vision put a lot of hard work into it to come up this amount. But I still think a few number, we can move around to neutralize the impact for the, for the taxpayer. I'm not going to go into the tax right now, because this is simply just a financial plan. Yes, I put it two separately, rescind. The other one, I'm going to speak about it later. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, not going to get in a long, when the speech after the last meeting, we, when we passed the, as a whole, we passed the financial plan. I stand by my decision then, I'll stand by it tonight. I think was wrong then, I still think it's wrong. As alluded to by councillor Wong, there's certainly a lot of good things on the financial plan that I would really support. Said it back in the first meeting, I'll say it again, we're not, we're not bank account for city people of council. They have their own bank accounts and they're suffering. And anyone thinks they're wrong and make remarks like, well, it's only $20, only $5. You try to take the $20 out of someone's budget that can't afford to buy crap dinner anymore, you'll find out that. So, so I'm not totally against financial planning, you got to vote one way or the other. And I, again, tonight, raise it on behalf of the people that I talked to, which is many. And I attend every league in finance. I don't take vacations very often. I attend every meeting because I want to have the information in order to represent the people that elected me. I want to make sure I got the right information at every avenue that I can. And it wasn't easy for myself as a councillor to vote against the budget. Very difficult. It hurt. I did a lot of research, I had hands full into it. Back to a lot, to a lot of people on what their thoughts was about raising taxes. Taxes normally should, you'll hear me say on record. Taxes normally should be raised in order to keep our infrastructure and everything else that we do as a body up to date. Make no doubt about it. I believe in that before this budget, I believe in it after. Not now, we're in pandemic. People were laid off, people's hurting, businesses are down. Yet we can, we can afford to send 500 people to off games by this province, but we can't, we can't open up business in northern Manitoba shape. And so again, I will stand by my position, I will vote to rescind this resolution. Thank you.
Further comment? Sir, has a problem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting this motion for different reasons. I feel like as a council, it's a responsibility to ensure that the fiscal situation is dealt with in the best, because it's not our money. The most utmost care, I guess I can put it, I believe it's called a fiduciary requirement or responsibility, if I've got that right. I take that very seriously and I regret that we've gone into this year positioned the way we are with the, our largest expenditure issue not being resolved and not coming to us yet for, with a resolved number. And with that in mind, I can't support this. I'm glad I have the opportunity to raise this again, because I feel that the way we're budgeting is unsustainable, given the numbers that we saw in, in the budget process. Pleased and happy to have the opportunity to point that out again. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councillors? All right.
Well, you know, I'm going to, councillor Wong, maybe you look at this. One I want to touch on was telling you that. Let me tell you something. We've been no further than that since we both on that. No closer, can't even get a look in the eye. Can't even get a look in the eye. You know, so we're divided. Same vibes, one vote tonight for it, same for us, one vote against it. Right? So that's being divided. We can't come to a consensus on the council and have a meeting to do it. Something around, I won't be supporting you. I'll be supporting this rescind, because I can't, I didn't support the budget. A lot of good things in there. Me, if there was no tax increase, I'd support it. But as it is, you know, that was supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor?
Just one question, Madam Mayor, if I can, for the administration. Admittedly, our finances are not something that I normally find myself at a huge amount of knowledge about, but the the way that we obtain money to use as CapEx, as capital expenditures, comes from the reserves that are fed by the surpluses that we have in the budget. Is there, is it standard for cities and municipalities across the province to fund their capital expenditures that way? Or is there more planning involved, like a five-year plan with money set aside or different means of taxation to get that CapEx? This would be very interested to hear from administration.
Most municipalities tax yearly to fund the capital expenditures. This year, council has elected to do so with the financial plan of the levy that was put forth. That was the first time in, I believe, eight years that the city of Thompson has elected to do that.
Then that's for water and sewer.
And the road renewals.
But for the other cap expenditures, it's, there's nothing to fund.
No, no, those usually come out of the reserves.
Thank you. Next?
Brian, go to the hands up.
Pardon?
Brian, Brian.
Brian, councillor number?
Yeah. I don't know if everybody's aware that our financial plan was required on May 15. And I presume there's administration there that they have it right now. Is that correct?
It's a requirement under the municipal act to have it to the minister by May 15 of every year.
Right, so we've passed this and earlier in the year, we passed a resolution that allowed our administration to spend five months into the year so that they wouldn't have to close the doors. And we had a big conversation about that at the time. And we had that conversation in finance as well. If we were to pass this resolution to shut down a previous resolution that passed our budget, what does that look like? The fact is that I'm not sure if our administration would have to close the doors. We have no, we would have no financial plan. The province, then they're looking at us that we didn't plan anything. We worked on that budget for four months. But I'm sad that we didn't all come to an agreement. With that in mind, like I, I can't support this resolution to shut that down and then shut our city down. But with that in mind, I think that we should start working on our budget for next year. Fortunately, not wait till after summer. Maybe if we had more time to hash these things out, maybe that would help us. But right now, this has to go. We can't delay this. We, we planned for capital that's coming this year and we plan for the whole year. I realize that there's some people that disagree, but we, we can't take this back. It's at the province. They're probably prepping everything for us so that we can send out our taxes for the year. I don't know. I can't imagine, but they would take, like, last year, we were very concerned because one of our entities didn't have their taxes in from year previous. That we're saying the same thing to the province if we do this. And no, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Peru?
I've mentioned it over and over again, but councillor Fountain brought up kind of a good point at which and councillor Lamark about starting a bit earlier, but getting clarity on different options and different ways of budgeting and looking at options. Maybe we keep going as it is, maybe it's the best way, maybe it's not. But I really think the way this budget went, I think it's a good heads up for us to start earlier and look at more options and maybe united next time. I'm not 100% happy with the budget. Enough, I was happy enough with it to pass it forward. As councillor Lamark said, I don't think we could go to the province and say, scratch that, we actually don't have a budget, because if we rescind this, we have nothing. It's not a mandate, we have nothing. So I don't really know if we do operate. So for that, I'm definitely against.
Thank you. I can run.
Yeah, I'm not supporting this resolution either. I think that a couple of things is, if, if there was a need to move things around or amend it, then that's what this should have said. This is rescinding the entire resolution and the entire financial plan, which does mean that we would have no ability to spend money or operate as of tomorrow. So I am not supporting this because it's going against the municipal process for municipality to file their financial plan and to be able to even operate. If there was a will to change it, it would have been an amendment, not to rescind something right off of the books. So I'm definitely not supporting this at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ellsworth?
Madam Mayor, my question is, after listening to a few of the councils, is the resolution of the night, is it in order? Is it in keeping with the universal relations? Or is it out of?
That's not clear. It is a requirement for the financial plan we put in, it was put on, if it were to be rescinded, that's basically unknown what the implication would be. My interpretation of the implication is tomorrow, we have no dollars to operate and I would be forced to close the doors. But I would have to speak with the minister's office on if something can be done in the interim. They have not run into a situation like this because municipal relations says council creates a budget and it's their responsibility to pass a budget and own that budget. So to then rescind their own budget, they've never encountered this before. So that's, that's my understanding, but if that's the will of council, then I will speak with the minister's office tomorrow.
Just to continue, and thank you, city manager, for that. I believe, I'm studying the universal relations and I'm not an expert, but I've read a lot of it and taken the time to do it, that it is within order to rescind any resolution that council brings up forward and it's duly settled, that is debated. I get what the council is saying, but let's be very clear. I understand the implications of voting to rescind this. I get that. But at that time, we, we argued this budget back and that we could have made some changes, that we could have had a unanimous decision. Council, once it decides tonight, it is not going to rescind it, we as a whole, we as an all, then, we, we, it's our budget. You're absolutely right. And, and if it's rescinded tonight, it'll be the last word on this budget you will hear from this council, because that's, that's democracy. Let's be very clear. Unless I'm told otherwise, and I did speak to the universal relations last week for the first time ever since the council, and they're wonderful people, Dr, they know their stuff. And they're wonderful people. Doctor, they know their stuff. In regards to resolutions. I would ask in the future, we're not sure, we need to make sure and, and all due respect to our city manager, you didn't have a question posed to you, so I respect that until tonight. But here's my big concern. I believe old heartedly that we could have done something. And we would have had a certainly a, a, a council that's working together. And let me say this, and it's not, it's not that I, I'm feeling any bad blood against anyone. But if you're not on one side, apparently this city, they're nothing. They're nothing. I'm the council that attends every losing, every last one, every day, but tonight you showed me. That's not expected. Just because I opposed the budget, I see now you react. You think I want to be in the mixed year. It's going to be tough for me to work with anyone. And I will, because the taxpayers put me there. But you showed me already tonight. I'm not going to name you. I know who you are. That some council's work is not appreciated and shame. Shame because the city will suffer for that in the long run. You'll have nobody running the council. Because it's made of well teams. And let me say for the record, the closing mayor, I'm on nobody's team. Nobody's team. Let's be clear about that. I will always do what's right for the people that, that, that elected me to council. And that's my heart and soul for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brayden, councillor McMurdo?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. Um, I'd just like to say that Deputy or councillor Wong. Does make some good points and we've had conversations where I heard specific proposals, but, but what I don't see in this resolution is a specific. To move money and, and to achieve whether it be a tax relief in, in a specific way, it's. It's a resolution to rescind the entire financial plan. And we're three weeks past the deadline, like we said, for submission to the province, so. For that reason, I, I won't be supporting it tonight. Thanks.
Any further comments with council?
Can I do the closing or you still want?
I would, I would like to say a speech to them or something and then you may. Uh, first I'm going to reference, I have a seven hundred thousand for the pool. I believe you were in the room. It was going to be seven hundred thousand just to keep the doors open at that time. I specifically asked that night if it was going to include the electrical, the Caltrum, all the other things that we needed for the pool. I was told a definite no. And then that is when us as council give direction. For the staff to go and do the engineering study to find out what it was cost and that's when we got the dollars back. Also in our budget, a lot of the extra dollars that we have taken in over the last year came in the form of grants from the government. Between our, our street recharge, our affordable housing and that, so it's been money that we haven't taken out of our taxpayers' pocket. As such, it's been money that we have worked very hard, all of us, to go to the government and get it put back so we can put it back into our community. So with that being said, yes, our numbers are higher, but we've also received more outside sources of dollars than, than normally do so. Uh, with that, I just want to say, everybody has had their chance, everybody has made their own decision. It's, and it does hurt, but it is a five-four split. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're a divided council. Yes, on this subject we are. That means we've got to work harder to get together and have a more balanced budget next year. And it means that everybody here is democracy. We all get to vote and we can see what we're doing and we have to. That's why we have to stay in touch with our public. I just talked to a lot of public too. And this is, I have yet to have more than two people come to me. Over the many I talked to that asked if we could change the budget. So with that, I won't be supporting this resolution tonight. And I will give you last word and closing, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is exactly what I'm trying to point out, the leadership. After the first reading, we could have sit down. I, I think I, I meet myself very clear with my language. I said, I'm not asking to script the whole entire forty-two million dollars. That still can be happened, but because of the leadership did not give me the opportunity, which is called special meeting. Or private meeting, amount of ourselves and sit down and say, listen, what exactly you guys want? I did make a proposal to individually to say, this is how I look at the money should be moved around. But I never got this opportunity. I'm not the mayor. I cannot leave this thing. I can just propose individually. And to me, you as a mayor, you should call a meeting and say, listen. What exactly you guys want? The budget scheme can be forty-two million dollars, but I say I have no opportunity. So for me, the only way I can bring it up again is to pick a reset. That's a tool that government give it to me as a letter of official. I want to work with everybody. I said it so many times, I'm not saying the whole forty-two million dollars that we got, we're just moving some money around. Like deputy mayor just said. Why you rescind it? Because I have no choice. You did not provide that opportunity for us to sit down and talk about it. You could even call a meeting for all of us. That's why I have to do this. With that. I ask for a call, please.
You may have a recorded vote and may I please remind you, it would take you and one other person to call a special meeting of council. At any given time. It does not have to be the mayor to call any special given meeting. All of you as councillors have that right. To call a special meeting at any time. I personally have no more power than any of you guys. I've got the same eleven percent. Power as you so. At any time, feel free in the future to call a special meeting. And I believe it takes two people to sign it. You hand it to Anthony, he calls a special meeting. We're all in attendance. I don't have, even if I didn't want the meeting. It happens. So just for future, remember just the mayor does not. Be, is not the one to call any special meeting unless I have a special meeting. So thank you. With that, we'll call for the question. Alls in favor of this resolution? Reported vote? Councillor Wong, councillor Fountain, councillor Elsberg, councillor Culver. All those opposed? Uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino, councillor Prue, Mayor Spook, councillor Lunnmark, councillor McMurdo. Thank you. And point two, that the resolution, to rescind number two zero two one zero seven three being a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices. For the purchase of polymer. Resolution two zero two one zero eight five, moved by councillor Prue, second by deputy mayor Valentino. Whereas on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, council has presentation number two zero two one zero seven three. Approving the recommendation of the purchase of polymer for the water wastewater treatment plant. The Clear Tech Industries for the first year and the Brent Hage Incorporated for the second year as pretender file number one oh nine two one. And whereas there was an error in the year two cost of the tabulation of prices. And whereas on May twenty-fifth, a written notice of motion to rescind resolution number two zero two one zero seven three was received. From the council member of the legislative and finance committee. Now therefore be it resolved that council rescind resolution number two zero two one zero seven. Three being a resolution approved the purchase of polymer for the wastewater treatment plant, what the administrator?
Yes, it indicates there was an error identified when this resolution was originally brought to council. Uh, the error was identified after the fact of the passing of the resolutions, uh, which is why this was brought to the finance committee. And then notice was given at the last council meeting and the recommendation is to pass this resolution. To rescind the previous resolution on the tabulation crisis.
Thank you, councillor Prue. Any other councillor? Uh, councillor Wong?
Why is it information wrong? This is the first time in my second term. I've never seen this before, making a wrong amount, presented wrong amount to approve it. So why, why happen? What happened? Why?
A member of staff made an error, then they identified the error as a fact and was brought back to council. It's completely transparent that an error was made.
I didn't say not to, I'm just saying why this ever can be happened first time in my, in my, in my.
I would say we're pretty lucky if it's our first error.
No, I mean, why does it happen like this? Are you, I mean, something is not right? I think something is not right there.
Maybe have a meeting with the, our city manager if he have concerns later. Thank you. Uh, councillor Elsberg?
No, no question of that.
Okay, any other councillors? Uh, councillor Fountain, then you?
I will always defend the right for people to be wrong and fix their mistakes of the administration for. On top of the air, fixing it the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Lunnmark?
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate what councillor Fountain just had to say as well. You know what? I'm, I'm happy that, you know what? We make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes. The only people that are making mistakes are the people that are doing something. So having the foresight to catch it and all we did was we passed the resolution. Sorry, we're rescinding it and we're asking another one to, to take the proper price. Thank you for catching it and, and coming forward with that. Oops. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor? Okay, we've seen none. We'll call for the question. All those in favor? Ten point three is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for concrete for the Jumpstart Gulf Beach Sport Court. Resolution two zero two one zero eight six, moved by councillor Prue, second by deputy mayor Valentino. There is a result that council approves the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award. The installation of piles and construction of a one hundred and twenty by one hundred and forty foot reinforced concrete pad. To AMV builders for the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Facet any applicable taxes as pretender file number one two three two one. And be it further result that from the two hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. The city share would be fifty thousand dollars and the rest being funded through the Jumpstart project contribution. For the administrator?
Yeah, so this is one of the requirements of our agreement with Jumpstart, um, that the city is responsible for tendering the piles as well as the foundation for the park. Um, this is put out to tender. Two companies responded. Uh, one's company was qualified to our requirements and that is the tender that has come forward this evening. As it's noted, the city's contribution of the city's hundred thousand was put aside for this project. Fifty of that will go towards this. Um, and then the rest of the costs are covered by the Jumpstart contribution. Well, yeah, I'm just happy to see this move forward. Uh, one question I have is, do we know when or what our next draw will be on for the rest of the money we put aside? Personally, do we, do we have stages? We, we do. It's all staged out with our director of public works, working with Jumpstart. So there's already work underway. Uh, the owner of Canadian Tire, the new owner, will be in Thompson tomorrow to come observe what's going on. Um, and then the next steps will move ahead once he's been here to basically review what's happening from the Canadian Tire perspective. And one more question again. Um, so if we would have got the, if the original or the person that, the company that got. That did not get the bid with the lower price, would we have still had to put the fifty, is it still the same dollar out? Yeah, the city still required to make its contributions for specific parts of the project that were done by, by Canadian Tire. Okay.
Councillor Culver?
Uh, my question is. As Canadian, or could they start to contribute money or is we going to pay for certain building and then give you refund?
My understanding is that we would, we would pay for the project and then be refunded. It's my understanding, but that's how most capital projects are done. Sorry?
There's another fault that we gotta pay, we'll give them back.
In a way, yes, yeah.
Councillor McMurdo?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. Uh, my first question was answered when Andre asked his about the fifty thousand contribution from us. Uh, my other question is, if, if we were to, to delay this and wait to see if the other vendor was able to get their certification. Does that put the project behind in a harmful manner as far as the other stages that are supposed to be completed? Thanks.
According to the project timeline, that would sink the project.
So, okay, thanks. Oh, thanks for that. Um, just then would, would be one follow-up. Is it? Standard, like I see that it was tendered on May eighteenth and work was supposed to begin with on June sixth or seventh, something or to that effect. Is that window normal as far as tendering the contract and starting the work after with a significant project like that? Just wondering if there would have been more notice if we would have been able to get that orbit in. Thanks.
The bid timelines can vary however any project owner wants to put them out there. Um, with respect to your question on allowing the contractor to secure things, um. You have to be careful, there's something called a bid repair. Which is illegal, um, which is if you put a bid in and the bid is incomplete, then giving a contractor the ability to go repair their bid. Um, creates an uneven playing field and can put us in legal jeopardy. So, um. Yes, I don't know, it looks like, yes, you could go and this is, it's a better bid, but. I don't want to get too much further into it because it's going into legal territory, but it to be mindful of the bigger pair.
Okay, thanks for your clarification on that matter.
Councillor Wong?
First, I'd like to say. I'm happy to see local contractors on this job, but I do have a couple of questions with this tender. Is any reason why you have to force certification?
Any reason why what?
The majority of the city's projects that have construction require the core certification as a safety standard and train standard that the city has adopted.
Is it our policy?
It's in our policies, I believe, and that's why it's included in the tender documents. All bidders are aware that once they take the bid package.
Second question is, I was wondering where they got the cement from? Who they buy from?
I have no idea.
The reason I'm asking is because we rejected one of the suppliers because of the gas control. So if we, if we buy the cement from that particular company, that's problematic to me. So I think somehow this question needs to be asked.
The tenders are, the responsibility for subcontractors falls under the, of the, the main contract. So the subcontractors that are engaged by this vendor, that's up to them to ensure that they're meeting the province or the city standards.
I, I live a disagree with that because we, 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 we can't, we cancel one of them suppliers because of the requirement. So now with the tender of contractor buy from that subcontractor, so it's kind of like. It, it's kind of, to me, is a little bit of solemnity to me. Well, that's why I asked the question. To me, no big deal. I think I'm happy for AMV budget, but just a question.
We would not have the knowledge of leader hiring as such. They don't have to tell us that.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, can I just add on to that? I believe we as, as, as a pay. We have the right to make that condition as well. It's how we write them, just like we put a quote as a, as a part of the requirement. It's how we write the tenure.
Anyway, yes, you're correct. The tender could be written anyway to request any information that we want. I don't know if that was requested. I didn't write this tender.
Just to point it out.
Thank you, councillor Elsberg?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I'm glad to see the project moving forward. I drive a fighter every day and see the process start to move through. Here's the thing though, I know that we probably communicated with the public. But I have got calls from business people asking what's going on over across from Giant Tiger. So maybe we should do an updated communication piece, just let people know we're now working on the Jumpstart program, if we could do that.
Um, we'll have to consult with Canadian Tire as there's, um, requirements to coordinate communications. Through Jumpstart as well, so it's not a city-owned only project. It's, it's required to go through certain channels.
Uh, councillor, if you want to answer?
We do have the groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow, though, so there is a media opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Earl?
I'm fine. Question with that.
All right, councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, can I? Uh, get clarification on whether or not part of the hundred thousand dollars was our work in time for clearing and grubbing?
I believe our work towards that is, is counted over the budget.
Uh, from the hundred thousand?
Would be from our hundred thousand.
And does administration have any idea where we're at in terms of expenditures there for grubbing?
I can get that from our director of public works. I don't have that.
I would like that. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm worried that the costs here and I've, I've been worried all along. Uh, the, the concrete issue notwithstanding. Um, in addition to the clearing and grubbing and part of the concrete cost, we also are required by. In addition to the clearing and grubbing and part of the concrete cost, we also are required by contract to provide security for that site for the entire time of construction as well as provide the fencing, if my memory serves. Uh, just knowing what fencing costs and and knowing what security costs are, I very concerned that it's gonna be well over the hundred thousand by the time this project is done with.
I see the fencing is all laid out and that is something the city owns as part of our nickel days and and that and the different activities that we have over there, so I would, I actually asked that question, that's what I might know that answer that the fencing is already sitting right on the yard, ready to be put around it.
Yeah, just as a whole, I believe we're probably depending on price of rubbing and clearing, we're probably approaching that hundred thousand already on there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. It's done by the city workers, right?
Large portions are being done by city workers, um, yes. So there's other parts that will be coordinated through contractors that Jumpstart hires, so they have specific contractors for installation of specific elements.
So so basically, just to carry on for a minute, my understand, they don't earn a lot of contract work in my day. If the city workers wasn't overdoing that, then they're doing something that's is defined, not taking money away from what Council Fountain was talking about, but would be defined as as as, it's not earned dollars, it's soft dollars, because we already own equipment, we already got the employees, so it's normally soft dollars that is hard to figure out because we're not contracting about it, and so you don't know what the bids are would be. Certainly an important question, I don't take that away, but it's our people doing it, which we want. Our people to do most of the work on any project that we can do because we've already got them there plus the equipment. That's one part of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Saying one more hands up, no more question? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Okay.
Uh, polls? Here.
Uh, Madam Mayor, just like while I was opposed to that, I did hear.
Yeah, that was my mistake, yeah, I am definitely opposed to this.
Yeah. Ten point four is a resolution to reconfirm commitment and resubmit an application for level three electric vehicle charging. Resolution two zero two one zero eight seven, moved by Councilor Ellsworth, second by Councilor Pro. Whereas Equal West Canada has been working on an electric vehicle project for Manitoba municipality for instant installation of level two and or level three electrical vehicle charges. And whereas sending pending Equal West Canada's contract with the NRC, Narcan, to fund the ZEVI IP electrical charging station program in Manitoba for charging stations as well as managed services online partial payment system for the stations for a period of up to five years. And whereas the city of Thompson has committed to install to install the level three charge station and has also secured a financial commitment from Community's Economic Development Fund to cover twenty five percent up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars of the associated cost of the project and is presently exploring other possible avenues for additional project contribution. Now therefore, be resolved that the city of Thompson will work with Equal West Canada in the application submission to facilitate the establishment of a local EV fast charging station in Thompson on city-owned land and or land to which it will be granted access for a period of no less than five years. And be it resolved, the city of Thompson confirmed it confirmed its commitment of twenty thousand dollars for level three charger for the ZEVI IP project in the Economic Development Reserve Fund. Uh, Councils, go to administration first.
Yeah, so council previously approved an application to this program through Natural Resources Canada. Uh, the city was unsuccessful with that application at that time as the program was oversubscribed. The government is now rolling this program out every several months. And this is an opportunity to apply for it again. It does require a resolution every time it's applied for. So this is basically a resolution saying council is still committed to this project or this sort of project and would allow us to proceed with the submitting the application to Natural Resources Canada.
Thank you, Councilor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have been working diligently, sometimes four to five meetings a week, and trying to get charging stations not only in Thompson but on Highway six and ten. It's been a tough slide, the 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 problem before, I will, we're not getting into too much detail is we had two groups applying for same applications that causes a huge problem. I'm pleased to say that we brought the groups together and there's only one group, if you will, would be a good thing for the council to listen to and work with. Uh, there's only one group now that's working towards this application. If you listen carefully to what was being read, Keisha Davis has stated very clearly that there is going to increase up five thousand, I'm not looking to the city, we're looking to reconfirm the twenty thousand dollars that we had said we would do it. And I'll tell you, if we want to really send a loud message, we have to support this. If City of Thompson will be leaving, kind of hard for us going to the government and getting on our knees begging for money for what charging stations are working with First Nations and other communities, trying to convince them they should have a charging station in their community so that when a person drives up to Thompson, he's got a place to charge along along the way. Let us re- reconfirm tonight, I've asked you to, as fellow counselors and mayor, so that we can be the leader and when when our representatives go to the government, we can say the city of Thompson is behind this, not only in talking about it, but by putting money that's already been committed. We now recommit that as the city manager have stated, uh, we have to do this each time that we apply. So I I really, really encourage you to do this, or or else I would say this. Don't know why I'm spending twenty hours some weeks on work on this if we don't have the support to do it, so thank you.
Thank you. Captain?
Uh, yeah, I'm definitely supporting this. I hope that the grant comes through, if it doesn't, I'll support it when it comes in again, there's another intake. I do believe the city needs to be a leader in this. And I appreciate the work that's being done, as I I definitely think it's important that we get the funding and we get this for in Manitoba.
Thank you, I can pass the call back.
A couple of questions. Uh, since C D is putting in twenty thousand and the city is putting in an extra twenty thousand, that's forty thousand? And my next question is, what is the total cost of this project projected?
The total cost of the projects that have been costed up in the past are between sixty five to eighty thousand dollars, based on how the quotes, every time it's done, they have to requote the project out.
So that is for one station or?
That is for one station, the infrastructure, the charging and payment system, all those different parts for a level three charger. You remember that, so the the city's side would have to come up with fifty percent and then NR can will provide the other fifty percent. So this secures the city's contribution or most of it, depending on how much the prices are fluctuating, and then NR can would contribute the other half. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I want to take the opportunity to praise the creator that this thing won't be made out of wood because then the the costs will be crazy, but certainly support this. And I do want to take the opportunity to point out, uh, and when we do have a grant come back that's not been approved, that it's been rare in my three years, so that says a lot for what administration has done over that time period, so kudos to them, certainly want to see this happen. And my understanding is, nothing's changed, that the public would have access to these chargers, which is going to be good for people that have approached me wanting this to happen. Uh, would be my preference that we have the faster charger, of course, that's more practical, and I believe that's the level three, is that correct? Yeah, so good to see this, hopefully we get a positive result from the federal government, I believe it's the federal government. And that will be under charge our electric scooters, I'll see blast out on this electric scooter here, sorry, Councilor Ellwood. Electric scooter here soon.
Oh, Councilor McMurdo, sorry.
Uh, no, no problem, thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to say to Councilor Ellsworth, everybody that's coordinated their efforts on this, good job, and I will definitely be supporting it, and I I think it's something we need to remember as a leading exporter of hydro power, electric power out of the north. This is, as far as clean energy goes, it's it's a pretty good story to tie together. And then the point that it's up five thousand for the installation costs over last year is the the sooner the better, I I would say that we get it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I would just like to say, I think with everybody with you is working together. I know when we've done different advocacy for this, there was always questions because there was sort of the two groups working, so I think everybody working on the same thing. Now, uh, Councilor Ellsworth is going to definitely be more proactive in this, so thank you. I see no more questions, we'll call for the question, all those in favor? Okay. Very good. Ten point five is a resolution to appoint signing authorities. Resolution two zero two one zero eight eight, moved by Councilor Fountain, second by Councilor Pro. Whereas by the virtue of bylaw nineteen ninety eight dash twenty twenty, being the city of Thompson organizational bylaw, the mayor, deputy mayor, and members of the legislative and finance committee are authorized to sign or authorize agreements, checks and other negotiable instruments of the city of Thompson. And whereas the bylaw further provides that the set agreements, checks, and other instruments shall also be signed by the chief administrative officer or an independent officer appointed by residents at the annual organizational meeting of council. Now therefore, be it resolved that the following person be appointed as signing officers due seventh, two thousand twenty one, until further notice for the bank accounts and for any and all other negotiations by the city of Thompson. Any two of the following, Jenny Prent, Chief Financial Officer, Gail Taylor, Assistant Financial Officer, Anthony Guinness, City Manager, Colleen Smook, Mayor, Kathy Valentino, Deputy Mayor, Councilor Brian Lambark, member of the Legislative and Finance Committee, and Councilor Andre Peru. Member of the League on Finance Committee. For the administration?
Yes, uh, this is a housekeeping resolution that comes out of any organizational changes. We have to file with our banking and other relevant authorities at the province.
Councilor Bowden? Anyone?
No, I appreciate people stepping forward, thank you.
Any other council's questions, concern? Nothing on TV, no, okay. So that will quote for the question, all those in favor? Anonymous. Ten point six, a resolution to ratify all appointments. Resolution two zero two one zero eight nine, moved by Councilor Deputy Mayor Valentino, second by Councilor Andre Peru. Their result, the council hereby ratify all committee appointments made at the regular council meeting on Monday, June seventh, two thousand twenty one. Administration?
Yeah, the city's organizational bylaw requires that all appointments be ratified by council at the end of the meeting. So it's it's another sort of housekeeping matter.
Thank you. Kathy, Smoker, do you have any comment?
Um, there's a lot of extra that went into tonight with extra resolutions, so thank you to administration for the extra work that has to be done with banks and province and all of this, so appreciate the extra work, thank you.
Thank you. Any other conference? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Okay.
Very good.
Request this simple motion to destroy the balance.
Okay. Okay. What's next? Ten point seven is the motion to destroy the balance.
Do I have to delete next?
Counselor Fountain, there's nothing to, it's just.
I'll say the motion to destroy the balance.
Okay, and second? Councilor, all in favor? For the record, it was Councilor Lambark who moved that, Councilor Fountain, second that. Eleven point one, we have the first reading of bylaw, two thousand thirteen dash twenty twenty one, repealing bylaw, let me bylaw by, uh, two thousand thirteen dash twenty twenty one. Resolution two zero two one zero nine zero, moved by Councilor Wong, second by Councilor Ellwood. Their result that bylaw two zero one three dash two zero two one, being by a right to repeat, to repeal bylaw twenty eleven dash twenty twenty one, being the levy bylaw of the city of Thompson, being introduced and read the first time. Yes, administration?
This is also another one that was submitted by a member of council. I would only caution council that repealing the bylaw rather than amending would put the city in a precarious situation. Normally, the bylaws are required to be in place. Um, but repealing the bylaw would require three readings and then another three readings to put a new bylaw in, whereas the amending bylaw would only require three readings, so it'd be a quicker process. Um, but that's just a procedural issue to the council.
Thank you. For Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Madam, and also thank you, uh, city manager to, uh, explain that procedural, I free aware of. I'm not going to go to a whole list again. One of the biggest point I want to resent is because of the two percent. In the same time, we see, like you just say, Madam, we receive millions and millions of dollars. You could even come up to a thousand to help out one year. Okay, especially eight hundred eighteen thousand dollars come from the government. It's so-called COVID relief fund to help out for this pandemic. A lot of people losing jobs, a lot of businesses closed. Reason you close again. I'm so worried about some businesses will never able to open again, they will be gone for good. Okay? So that's why I think it's the right thing to do. Last all to really consider this budget, especially the two percent. It's not the right time. And thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Ellsworth?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I again, as well, not being too busy, I, in fact, let's declare. I disagree with financial plan at start and this bylaw for the exact reason that's been already said, the two percent. In fact, if you understand the numbers that's presented at Legion Finance, whatever much money is owed in utility and much money is owed in property tax. I hope I'm wrong, but now you burden the taxpayers that have no job or businesses that's been hurt by the pandemic, you in fact might see a lot more money owed to the city than you did previously because of those risks. So therefore, again, in keeping with what the city manager said, I I I still have to to devote for this because I don't believe we should have, as a council, increased taxes at a pretty good time in people's lives, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Pro?
Oh, yeah, it's, even if it's fine not to agree, it's it's all news to me now, but if we pass this bylaw, it's gonna cost quite more than two hundred thousand in damages and lots of grants in the future and all that kind of stuff, so I definitely, again, cannot agree with this, even though there's obviously things in the budget I don't agree with, but this would be far too costly to assume, so I I don't agree with this by law. Or sorry, with the recent, you invited.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Any meaning, Madam Wong, Councilor Coleman?
Well, I gotta agree with it again because I don't agree with the increase in two percent. My biggest comment. But, you know, Councilor Lambark said, you gotta pass it because it's going to get the city. We didn't ever let the process last year until July, was it? And we got the books for the control area, we got. And we got the books for the control area, we were waiting. With late, in that option.
Um, I can clarify that. So last year, um, the budget timelines were under the state of emergency. The premier in the province allowed an extra month to pass them. So they went from the middle of May fifteenth, which is regarding the news block to June fifteen. Um, with respect to the control entities, that was to do with the audit, which is a separate process. So the budget, we did get an extra month to pass it because of COVID, but the audit itself, which was separate, was delayed. Thank you. So, uh, still be supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. Council final?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I certainly see the conundrum we would be in if we all supported this and and it passed. The. The issue for me though is when we had our last meeting here talking about this, there's two weeks, uh, two meetings ago. I had indicated that I felt like we were passing an unsustainable budget. I saw quite a few people nodding their heads here and I asked those people, you know, I I wouldn't blame them for not supporting this today. I think that, uh, you know, this is a counter worms potentially that would cause a lot of issues. However, and I just want to point out the difference between myself and my colleagues on this. I have no issue with a tax raise, tax increase. Of course, I have an issue with tax increases. My problem is that we're going to have to do this more and more. We're going to be sitting in this exact same position now. But worse, where we're having to look at significant cuts or significant tax raises. That's my opinion. I may be wrong on that, but what I heard during our budget deliberations was that. We're in a in a position that I can categorize and I took away as difficult. And knowing that I can't possibly proceed and accept the budget that I feel is unsustainable, given that this is not my money. Taxpayer dollars. And as we proceed, not knowing what our biggest expense is going to be. Um, I think that I'm not, you wouldn't be doing your fiduciary responsibility. Um, to approve this budget. And that's of course is my take. And in addition, I want to point out, there's been some talk about separation and, uh. You know, lack of unity on this council. I'm willing to work with anybody as long as it's for the best interest of the community. I certainly in this vote, I'm only doing that in that regard, not for many, you know, group stats or anything like that. But, uh, again, I want to point out this budget, in my opinion, is unsustainable and I think we're going to be in a worse place next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say again that I'm I'm not going to be supporting this at all. And I will be the one to ask for the recorded vote on this because as our administration has spoke to us. That this levy by law is with the province already had three readings. There is no possible way that we could have three readings to repeal a by law, to have three readings of a by law put in. In time for them to start printing our property tax bills, which they probably are already doing with the province. So process for me is very important and this is not part of a good process or anything that would work. So I'm definitely not supporting this and I will be asking for the recorded vote. There's some, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Brian is Brian.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I can't support this. We we're already. Like I said earlier, the budget and financial plan are with the province. We have to move forward or. Close city hall and well, our staff. Need to be paid and things have to move forward. We also have applications out for funding to do work on our city. Uh, infrastructure. And. Can. We applied for it. Now that that was part of our plan and the we need to move. Like or not. Thanks. Uh, um, I'll be, uh.
You're breaking up.
For that change. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I won't be supporting this. We, like I said, we need to move forward.
Uh, any other?
I lost you now. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh. Council one, did you want to close the statement?
I didn't hear the speech.
Uh, I will not be supporting this. I believe we all worked very hard to get the budget we had in place. I do believe that as a council, we will work hard and to make it work as everybody has stated. And we will move on in the future. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to do the closing then, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Put it this way. Is that how you tell tell me shut up? Okay, okay, Madam Mayor. You know what? I'm not naive. Just I did this because I think it's the right thing to do. I understand what a process I do. Seven years under my belt. You think I learned nothing? But again, a lot of times we make a mistake as elected official. We always worry about if you're not taxing, you're going to have a trouble next year. You know what I think? When you're not taxing, you have to cut expenses at the same time. What to cut? Okay, let me rephrase. Not expensive, waste. We have to cut the waste to able to keep up. But if you're not doing it, we keep on a status quo. I can see a big trouble. The next year will be worse. After that, God knows, the term is over, right? So thanks for the asking for a record of us. So I wanted to ask and then we might closing. Thank you.
Thank you. As per deputy marriage request and a recorded vote, uh, the resolution two zero two one zero nine. There are all those in favor? We have, uh, Council Ellsworth, Council Fountain, Council one, Council Coburn.
And you can also prove, no?
Yeah, I don't feel it.
Opposed. We have Mayor Smook, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Council crew, Council landmark, Council McMyrdle. Thank you. It's been repeated. And this has lost number four. And so the marriage report for May twenty sixth to June seventh. Along with council members, city manager Anthony McGinnis and communication officer Jasper Anashewski. We have the opportunity to tour the Canadian Armed Forces Helicopter and set up on May twenty seventh. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we hosted the AMM cities practice meeting on May twenty eighth. Along with council Ellsworth and city manager McGinnis, we participated in FCM's virtual conference and trade show from May thirty first to June fourth. Due to the registration costs for this, we only booked myself as a delegate and we held it in council chamber so that anyone had the opportunity to come. And it was, uh, Council Ellsworth, myself and city manager McGinnis had attended. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met with the owner of Shocker's Drug Mart on June the second. Along with the Thompson Community Development Purification Board, Winter Weather Testing Committee, the city manager McGinnis. We attended a Zoom meeting with MP Nikki Ashton and Barry Kirk of CAFS Canada. And I participated in the KPC memorial honoring the two hundred and fifteen indigenous children of the Calhoun Residential School. Also further to that, MKO had a monument, but they had a gathering. And also on May twenty ninth, Kristen Whitfield led the group and put, actually it was more than two hundred and fifteen pairs of shoes. In recognition of all the the missing murdered children that were found in in Calhoun. And this is not something that is a pointable way. It is going to be in our lives for a long time. So please remember the children. We've all put our flags down. We've, uh, the conversations are started. I do believe there will be further things happening as a result of this. And please reach out to all the the families in that. The North, especially in Hickard, we have a lot of people that are resident, went to residential school and are residential. School survivors and my thoughts are definitely with all of you. Uh, we had various committee meetings were held, development review, legal and finance. And June is, June is buddy up month. So mark your calendar. So for June, buddy up month, what this is. It's a buddy up campaign to provoke conversations among men and their buddies and raise awareness for the issues of men and suicide. The city of Thompson is participating in this buddy up campaign for men's mental health and suicide prevention. As buddy up champions, the city will be promoting weekly activities, contest prizes and swag with our employees. And encouraging others in our community in the north to participate. Look out for the weekday contest and your chance to win and an amazing gift cards and a buddy up program. And I would just like to say that I've already heard a couple of the other companies that are coming on board here. So please get out and promote buddy up. I know here at the city, if you get a hold of Diana, she will set you on the right track about it. It's definitely a very good program and very needed in the north in with all the pandemic and everything is going on. And I will end this. I have a marital proclamation. Whereas older adults in Manitoba are valued members of society and deserve to live with dignity. And whereas abuse of older adults is an ever increasing issue in our society that crosses all socio economic boundaries. And whereas most abuse of older adults is hidden. And whereas ageism is a major cause of abuse of older Manitoba. And whereas older Manitoba deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers. And important and active members of this province. And whereas preventing abuse of older people will help to improve the quality of life for all older adults in Manitoba. And will allow older adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute. To the length and vibrancy of Manitoba. And whereas empowering older persons is an effective tool in preventing abuse of older adult. By the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim June fifteenth, two thousand twenty one. As world elderness abuse state in the city of Thompson and encourage all of our residents to recognize and celebrate their accomplishments and seniors. Dated this twelfth day of June, uh, two thousand twenty one, actually, we're the seventh day today with the time. So, uh, please, uh, reach out to a senior and elder in any way that you can. I will hold to council if there's things that you attended. Council over.
Uh, I just want to say I was pleased to attend with the care of representing the the two hundred and fifteen children. That's why I wore a T-shirt tonight. It was my first opportunity. Uh, at the chambers, certainly more when I was was at the meeting with Mayor Smook and others from the administration that went. I want to tell you it was well organized. We had a good turnout from the RCMP, CSOs, or even even the the. There was other other businesses there was there as well and they they all followed the guidelines and script. And I'll tell you that I showed up here every day from Monday to Friday for the FCM. Why did I show up? Because of some very important information. I just want to take you to one day, June the third. Which was a very difficult day for me to show up because that was the day my father died tragically. But I thought it was important to come to count to come to the FCM. And one of the topics that day was one of the biggest problems that we have in this city, which is almost. Almostness. And there were some good things that came out of that that I learned personally. Hopefully, we can share them in a role. But I will say when an opportunity comes before you as elected body and if you can make it and I get some people to work, well, you can make one hour. Out of five days will help. I want to thank Mayor Smook for inviting council and certainly city manager was there as much as he could. I did find out that our city manager. Uh, thank you, Anthony, for for the week, but, uh, does a lot of work and I want to thank you for the work that you do for this city. I found last week, the city manager that was very overwhelmed and a lot of work on his plate. And I actually shared today that normally the city manager, he doesn't miss much when it comes to things with FCM. Or AAM or any of these things. And I watched them running last week to the point that I had to reach out on a text and encourage it. And that that means a lot to me. And even though tonight again, probably a top city council meeting. I'll say to my fellow councillors, the budget is over. It's over. We now start to do the work for the next year. And I will pose by saying this, I said it earlier, and and I've had discussions with our councillors. And maybe it'd be very clear in this chamber tonight. Again. I'm not on my team. There's only one team. It's a mayor and eight councillors. But that also gives us the right. To debate. To vote against or for whatever, but at the end of the day, we respect democracy. I want some of you tonight not do that. By your own action. And I'll leave it at that. I seen that. And that hurt me. Because I'll tell you, I'm not raising the flag here and shouting, it's me. There's no councillor puts more coming to this than all of them. I do help continue to do that for the people that elected me. But when you voted against me as elected body because I voted against the budget. Again, I'll say it and I'll debate it with anyone chained on me. But you just put a put a dirt in the herd on one of the hardest working councils you've gone on council. And I'm very concerned about that. And thank you, Mayor, again, for all that has done in the city to recognize. Uh, the people that's over, especially during this time, two hundred and fifteen, which has gone across not only our nation, but the whole world and hurt all of us. So we did our best.
Just if you could touch to the public, the boys beautifying Thompson campaign for the months. Our beautifying Thompson campaign pool. Okay, um, would you rather do it, Casper?
Would you prefer me to do it? So for the month of June, uh, it is, we are running our beautify Thompson campaign, formerly known as Community Clean Up Thompson. Um, basically every week you get out, you pick up some litter anywhere around town. Send us a picture on Facebook, on Instagram or by email and we'll post it online. And you have a chance to win every week, um, either some of the north swag. Some recycle everywhere swag or one of two gift cards from one of our local businesses. Um, as it is beautify Thompson, not just community cleanup. You also have the opportunity to do something small to spruce up your property, whether it's just plants and flowers. Paint a fence, do something like that and you'll also be entered to win a draw at the end of the month. Actually, it's six weeks. We just wrapped up our week one. And we just got our first entry for that. So I'm really excited about that. And we have some local organizations too who are taking the lead on it as well. I R E Six Express just announced a cleanup or they're going to get out and do some cleanup. I know I've gotten some outreach from schools. They want to do some cleanup. Saturday Pride of the Northern Fifty Five is also doing a cleanup. So I'm really excited to see the community buy in that we're getting in the summer. And I think that about wraps it up for that.
Okay.
Thanks, Casper. Thank you, Madam. Uh, yeah, I attended the meeting with our local MP, Ms. Ashton. Along with the the councillors and the mayor that were mentioned before. I do want to just mention publicly that I I took the opportunity to advocate for Byron rights. Something that I feel like in this, uh, in this writing is not brought up enough. However, it's an important issue for the majority of the people in the writing. In addition to that, I was, uh, chewed out of the two hundred and fifteen indigenous children memorial due to COVID things. Uh, but I was pleased to be there for the short period of time that I could. Kudos to Miss McCall for putting that together. Um, two hundred and fifteen indigenous children at one residential school in this country. Is going to start a chain reaction of schools and and looking for the bones of lost ones all across this country. Uh, this is started in other countries as well. I just want to take the opportunity to be a bit reminiscent and remember a time when I was a kid. Watching Saturday Night Live in the late eighties. We had a an artist that was very famous, uh, was riding the top of her career at that time. And she pointed out the Catholic Church and their crimes against children across the her country, which was Ireland. That woman suffered the loss of her career doing doing that publicly. And I want to take the opportunity to potentially lose the loss of mine today and say shame on the Catholic Church. The federal government to step forward with all sorts of reconciliation policies. And it's done, maybe not the best of, uh, examples of reconciliation. of reconciliation, but I feel like the municipal governments, family government, professional governments are moving forward with respect to reconciliation. However, a big player here in the Catholic Church is still stuck after all the crimes that church has committed over the years, not having moved an inch, not one inch on taking responsibility for the crimes that that organization did across the country, not only to indigenous people, but to children across the country and across the world. So again, I'm pleased to take the opportunity to say shame on you, Catholic Church. Hopefully, you'll learn from this. Branson, work forward on reconciliation of your own.
Okay, Councilor Prue?
Yeah, I just attended, I guess, some of the same meetings as well, with the Councilwoman, with the MP. But, yeah, the big, I guess, elephant in the room always right now is the two hundred and fifty children, indigenous children. And being up north here, we've always heard these stories. This isn't new to us. This is old news, right? They've always said it. But now that they actually found those and people are believing it and seeing it, I think, yeah, I think it will create a chain reaction and Thompson has been a leader, like a gun to a conference in Victoria. And Thompson was definitely a leader in, in truth and reconciliation. And not that we're perfect by any means, but I am proud of the city and how we work with our, our surrounding communities. And I hope the churches some way, somehow pull up their socks. But, yeah. Just, I am proud of the city, but it is hard to hear and see when there are so many people downtown and we get to see that what happened because of residential schools. So we got some support coming and a cool, open, big impact in the north with their silver and center and all that transitional housing. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Brayden?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Spook. I just wanted to, to, to thank my fellow councillors and yourself for their words on that important and painful subject of residential schools. It's, it's a legacy that we see up in the north and on our streets. So hopefully, the federal government is serious when they say that they're going to do more to support the, the intergenerational effects that that's had. And just on another note, tip of the hat to any citizens that have been involved so far in the community cleanup. I've started on a little spot along Thompson Drive. So good job to anybody and encourage anybody else to get out. Thanks.
Yes, I have started over the last week, been going out and actually handing out garbage rags and picking up garbage for people. And that's definitely picking up. And today I went actually downtown in a couple places. So those places will be going on a regular basis, but I'm committed to working with our downtown people and that too. We're all helping it together to clean up the downtown here. So thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you again for all the support for the in memoriam, memoriam of the two hundred and fifteen souls that were found. And thank you, and we will call for a German. Earl and Kathy, all favor?